Good evening. I'd like to call the Wednesday, June 12, 2024 Douglas Plan and Board Meeting to Order. Time is seven o'clock. First item, we're going to go around the table. Just say your name for the attendance for the minute taker. Jacob Schultzberg here.
Meg Schlesman here.
Mike DeRose, here.
Mike Greco, here.
Mike Zwicker, here.
Jake Gennatic, here.
Okay, and Mr. Preston and Mr. Marx are absent with excused and as well as-
Aaron Sokrath, here, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Aaron Sokrath is here on Zoom, so we'll have to do just roll call votes around the table. All right. Second item, we are missing one member. The board is fine with doing a reorg with the one member missing. I'll hand it off to either Mr. Benoit, who I believe might be online, or Jen to handle that. So I don't have an issue going forward with the reorg with one person missing.
I have no issues with that.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no issues, I would like to open the floor for nominations for Chair.
And I'll nominate Jake Schultzberg to be the Chair.
Second.
All right, any other nominations? Seeing as no other, I will accept it. I guess roll call vote for that.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike DeRose, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Jake Gennatic, aye.
Okay, and I will open up the table.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Okay.
By the way, thank you.
Aaron, is there any way you can change your name?
What is- how does it show?
It says Motto Z, just so I can know that it's you.
How do I do that? I don't want to do that, that's all. I'm going to do something.
We know where you're at now.
All right, at least I know Motto Z, Aaron Sokrath.
Huh?
Sorry. I had no clue who that was. All right, I'll open up the table for nominations for Vice Chair.
And I'll nominate Meg Schlesman.
All right, motion nomination made by Mr. Zwicker. Any other nominations? It was seconded. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing as none, Meg, are you interested in accepting that challenge?
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Does she get to vote?
Nope. No, she could, actually. I think she could, so.
Mike DeRose, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Jake Gennatic, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
All right. So we are reorgs. All right, number three, A and Rs, there are none.
Before we open the public hearing, would you want to address the board?
Sure.
All right, regarding this public hearing, after receiving the agenda, I reached out to the State Ethics Board, Pine, Sand and Stone, and I had been in talks regarding my own property prior to my election, and have continued since my election. Called them to see how to proceed. They suggested writing a written, sorry, losing my word here.
Disclosure?
Disclosure.
Okay.
Brought up the disclosure, and it's been filed with the town clerk. I feel I can overview this particular item with ethical and fairly, with integrity, so to speak.
All right. Thank you for that. So with that, I will open up the public hearing for 7:00 PM. Pine Sand Company Incorporated, application for site plan review, SPR-240520, Office Building slash Outdoor Storage, 286 Webster Street, possible votes.
If I can share my screen, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, just make that work. I don't know if you have to make the request or-
I can, but what's its name on there?
Dan DeCesares.
Yep.
Jake, you have to read that.
And then if you can just come up to the table and say your name and company and address and-
Do you have to read the public hearing?
Oh, I do.
Yeah, before we proceed, public notice.
Yep. Jake threw me off.
Thank you.
All right, name of applicant, Pine, Sand and Stone Company Incorporated, date and time of public hearing, Wednesday, June 12, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Subject matter of the hearing, the applicant is requesting approval from the Douglas Plan and Board pursuant to the Douglas Zone bylaws, Section 9.4, Site Plan Review. Project description, this is a proposed development of a 1,250 square foot office building with a dense grade gravel outdoor storage area, septic system, private well, and stormwater management areas. Project site and location, the project is located at 286 Webster Street, Douglas, Mass. Assessors map 205, Parcels 2 and 3. Place of public hearing, Douglas Municipal Center, Resource Room 29, Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on should appear at the time and place designated. Visit douglasmass.gov for the agenda and Zoom information. Copy of applicant is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. 01516. Public hearing is now open. Start that again. If you want to grab a chair, just so the mics can pick you up a little closer to the table. Anything, just identify yourself, please.
My name is Dan DeCesares, professional engineer and project manager with Joe Casselli Engineering. Office is at 300 Post Road in Warwick Road, Iowa.
You can just speak up a little more.
Yeah, sorry.
All right.
So yeah, I have a brief PowerPoint to go through, just to summarize the site and the project.
Okay.
So as far as where we're located, the site is just to the east of the Webster Douglas Town Line on Webster Street. There is an old right-of-way, Old Douglas Road, which bifurcates the site. The site actually consists of two parcels, Parcel 2052, which is about 4.3 acres, and Parcel 2053, which is about 4.9 acres. Both parcels lie within the industrial zone as well as the adult entertainment overlay district, though that has no bearing on the subject. As noted, there is an old right-of-way, Old Douglas Road, that bifurcates this site. During some pre-app meetings with the town, the town has no interest in continuing to maintain that right-of-way. So we're proposing to merge, abandon that right-of-way and merge it with the two parcels to create one contiguous parcel of about 9.2 acres, as shown, and that would be completed through the A and R process. There are a couple of isolated wetlands on the site, which per local ordinance have a 100-foot buffer zone. So as mentioned, the project's scope consists primarily of an outdoor storage facility. Accessory to that is a small 1,250 square foot office building. We are including a small four-stall parking lot, including 1 ADA space. Access would be from a driveway curb cut on Webster Street with dedicated turning lanes. The majority of the site will consist of essentially a dense grade, compacted asphalt surface for outdoor storage. At this point, the spaces may or may not be striped. It's to be determined. The actual storage area is about 203,000 square feet of area. The site's proposed to be enclosed, encompassed with a six-foot-high chainlink fence with a gated entry at the main entrance with a knockbox for fire department access. We are proposing approximately eight street trees spaced 35 feet on center along the entire frontage. As part of a potential future development, we may implement a storage building at the rear of this property. At this point, we're just showing it for informational purposes. It's not part of this application at this time. And the office building would be serviced by a small septic system and a private well. As far as the topography of the site, there's a low point at the northwest corner of the site. The topo generally grades up towards the center of the site where it drops off dramatically to another low point. So as far as stormwater management, we are proposing to level the site out, so we have relatively flat grades throughout 1% to 2%. Stormwater would be directed to the two low points, captured in a couple of infiltration basins, filtered, infiltrate, which, and then discharge to existing design points mimicking existing conditions. We do have one waiver request from the Site Plan Review section for architectural plans. Given the small size of this building, we're requesting a waiver from that requirement, and we may actually not implement the building. This site may be managed remotely from an off-site location. We're also requesting several waivers from the Earth Removal section. However, I don't-
I was going to skip over that now, yeah.
Yeah, that's not the subject of tonight's meeting. So as far as the permitting process goes, we did file and meet with the Conservation Commission on June 3. We got some positive feedback on the project. They did ask that we shift the disturbance and fence line another 15 feet or so away from the wetland edge, which we've done on the revised set of plans. As noted, we have tonight for Site Plan Review. We'll be back on July 17 for Earth Removal Permit Review. Ultimately, we'll need approval from the Health Agent for the septic system, and then finally building permit from the Building Department. So that's a broad overview of the site. Happy to answer any questions on the site, site design.
We do have, I know for the board, for everyone, we do have peer review back for it, but we're going to wait until the next meeting and just discuss it all in one with the site plan and the Earth Removal portion, so.
I just have two questions for the Chair. If I recall correctly, we had a project up in the same area that was somewhat approved, and the big hangup was the easement in the road. So I think before even considering it, we had to have some action stones on making sure, because they wanted to do two separate buildings-type deal, but because of the easement, it couldn't be considered as one, which you were trying to resolve, which created a big fiasco, and that's why we never heard any more on that project. It was because of the easement and that old, that's the old road. Question two I have is, these are all proposed, I'm assuming, parking spots for whatever's going on? Are they storage cells or parking spots?
They're essentially parking spots, RV, storage, boat, storage, something along those lines.
Right. So the biggest thing I'm looking at is line of sight in and out from that area. If you're pulling in and out, say RVs, boats, whatever, I know it's not going to be all the time, but you're still going to be having stuff going in and out of there. So I see nothing written up at all about line of sight, especially with the plantings or anything you're going to be doing along the road, making sure there's no hindrance, even at truck height. A lot of times people only think of car height, so they'll plant something, sitting in a truck, and all of a sudden you can't see diddly. So consider it on both sides.
And I know, this is when I mentioned that peer review, not peer review, tech review, there was no police involved, I didn't have any comments to, just for the reference. So, do you know this?
Chairman?
Oh, yes.
I can answer that. I can answer that. So the fire department did ask them to give us kind of a turning radius in the back, make sure that truck, fire truck can get all the way through the site. And with regards to the easement, the Board of Select voted a while back that that easement is not, no wire to be serviced. Town has no interest in it at all, as Mr. DeCesares already mentioned. So that easement effectively doesn't exist. It only exists on paper at this point. But they have to maintain a right to pass a repass until it's removed by the A and R process, which will be forthcoming.
Right. Which I totally agree with, but print's right now, still call it a road. So until that is like removed, it still is, so.
Okay.
Andy, you want to take Pine, Sand, and- so we had our attorney, not going to be able to do extensive research on it, met with Matt, so it really goes back to, actually it was kind of crazy. The laws governing county roads go back to 1693, I believe or not. So I think Matt was going to present it to Town Council, but I think we can prove that for a background.
Which, through the Chair, which is great. I have bought Old Bailey Road. It's an abandoned road. So I know it's not, but it's not on the map listed the way it is here. So the thing is, what we're looking at on all this stuff that's listed a particular way, which by right, it's still a legitimate road. So documentation, whatever comes up down the road that hasn't laid out that way, I can see. So I only look to the middle of Old Bailey Road. It's been abandoned, and that's what's done. Or if you surround the property, you can sue that old road or whatever, that old easement. Just so everything's clear. And I know you're doing it right, but I mean, what we're seeing in front of us is still listed as an easement.
Do you have an estimation when you might file for the A and R?
Yeah.
Emanently.
Yeah, I mean, the survey's done. It's a function of drafting the merged plan and deed description.
Could that be something that could be done before this is closed out?
We can, we can confirm, yeah.
Okay. That might just help the whole project. You'll get it all done in one shot, and we know it's all legit and normal.
Yeah, because it's pretty hard for a board to sign a print or something that has something on it saying that, oh, it's going to change. I don't think any council's going to say, yeah, that's okay, that's cool. You know, we're signing a document. So as long as it's all cleaned up by then, I don't see no-
That was the goal of talking with, at the tech review, it was discussed pretty heavily.
Any other members' comments or questions? Mr. Rose?
Yep. How will the public access the site? The users that are storing things there?
Well, to be determined. It could be through a building there, but most everybody's doing things remotely now, so there'd be some kind of gate whether it went this way or that way.
Yeah, and a key code or something.
Key code type of thing.
Because that would affect the traffic concerns, you know, if they can access it at 8:00 at night, you know, versus only, you know, during normal working hours. And that's a tough trade-off, but, you know, there's, you're probably safer unless you're in the middle of the night moving a, you know, a big boat.
A gate would be such that there's ample room to pull a vehicle totally off the road.
So it's going to be my question.
Yeah, we have about 80 feet between the gate and the side of the roadway, so you could fit a pretty large vehicle and not stick out into the road.
Hopefully, it'd be wide enough that if some clown pulls in and doesn't realize what it is, you know, with a trailer, he could turn around.
Yeah.
And with the-
Yeah, with the two lanes out and one lane in, we're at about 40-foot width on that drive, so.
Through the Chair, tractors, you're going to be having heavy truck traffic possibly, storage there, people storing lowboys, things of that nature. The only reason I'm asking that is, I know you have 80 feet, but you also, we all know, three axle tractor with a four or three tag trailer, you're going to be all of that out into 16. So are you going to have enough depth there to allow someone to open a gate if some other car comes in behind, so they're not parked on 16?
So that's a good point. We will address that, because the intent is not to have lowboys, but a lowboy could bring something in.
Right, and unload it there. So he's going to be sitting there, and somebody else all of a sudden's coming up, and now you have traffic, and 16's only one lane. Now your vehicle's stopped on 16, which is a bad road to begin with. Now you're creating even more of an issue or an opening where, to adjust for that, you know, somebody brings in a tractor and they have a skid steer on it, or who knows what.
Yep, understood. Well addressed.
Something that could be, because they are loading, I mean, you know, you're looking at a load, a load.
Jake, yeah?
Through the Chair, Andy, will you have, do you have proposed hours for this operation?
I think we had it at, the normal business would be nine to five, but in today's world, people act, you know, they want to get it, but they want to get it.
Yeah.
So I think our posted business was nine to five.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
One of those like nine to five, but available.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you have a, through the Chair, key code, you can go in and get your stuff at 5:00 in the morning to get out of there.
That's all. A lot of storage facilities operate.
Yeah.
Through the Chair.
And it'll be illuminated?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Something to consider, that I don't know if this has been done at other facilities, but you could tie in some indicator lights flashing yellow or something with the gate, that when the gates open, so that, you know, the people that are coming down 16, at least, I mean, you don't need a, if there's a sign there that says, you know, storage facility up ahead or something, people aren't going to pay attention to it. But it's, you know, you don't need a blinking light all the time.
Yeah.
But something-
Something we can consider, we have Earth Removal in another town that's similar to that.
You know the area. People have been driving that stretch of road for 40 years through the woods, and now all of a sudden, a business of some sort's going to be there, so. Be a big change for scenery, for sure. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience with any comments, questions, or concerns, either here or online? Mr. Sokrath, do you have anything?
No, not at the moment. I think the graphic presentation was extremely good, the way it layered, almost like a, don't want to use the word derogatory, like a cartoon where you can see things happening on that site. It was quite good. So I just, we'll see how things go, but so far, so good, I guess.
Okay. All right, you have anything else you want to present or discuss over here?
Good job.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until July 17. We'll do seven o'clock.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Schultzberg. Roll call vote, please.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike DeRose, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Jake Gennatic, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We shouldn't be long for the next one, for you guys.
Thank you.
Should be quick. All right, so the 7:15 public hearing for McIntyre Loom Incorporated, the application for special permit, 240416, Earth Removal Permit, 240416, and Site Plan Review, 240416. That has been requested by the applicant to continue until July 17, 2024. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue that public hearing until July 17, 2024, at 7:15 PM.
So moved?
Seconded.
Led by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Gennatic. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike DeRose, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Jake Gennatic, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
All right, this should be quick, just a master plan update. It's still there, but there's been a meeting since the last update, but the community compact grant was submitted last week, and the next meeting is scheduled for June 26 for that, so. All right, all right, additional business B, Area E for Pine, Sand and Stone, Earth Removal, 140129, one-year extension, possible votes. If you can come up to the table and explain what's going on and-
Good evening.
Identify yourself, please, sir.
Sure. Murray Bristol, Pine, Sand and Stone, one lackey damn road.
Okay.
We're coming in front of the board to do our usual renewal of our yearly permit for Area E, which is the DeVries property, which abuts our property, and it's ongoing, I guess. Not a lot of changes. Basically, it's just keeping it fresh so that if we do get into that area, that, you know, we have access.
All right, and speaking of Mr. Benoit, is no objection for this, and this would be, if we vote on this tonight, it will still only be extended until April of 2025.
Correct.
Board, any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing as none, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the one-year extension for Area E of Pine, Sand and Stone for Earth Removal, 140129.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote, please.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike DeRose, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Jake Gennatic, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
All right, we'll get that signed, and we'll be in touch with you.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too, thanks. Do you have something else?
When we get, when you get to ongoing business, I just wanted to bring up something that's sleepy-hall.
Sleepy-hall, all right, I'll keep that on my- All right, so for additional business C, we have a minor amendment request to site plan decision for 140D of the street, possible votes. Is there anyone here for that? Mr. O'Leary's online. So, anyway, all right, so with this, there was a discussion that was made. The applicant was requesting that we consider a minor amendment to the site plan decision, specifically for Condition 16. They're looking to, see if we can change the wording so that the applicant, it's a, I forgot how it was written, but they want, requesting for it to be read, that they must apply for an Earth Removal Permit within one year of the date of this decision prior to commencing construction on this project. Just with delays in construction, they just want to make sure that this project can move forward, and they don't have any delays in this wording, and they're in the process of getting that application in, so.
If I could through the Chair, the first decision's wording was that they must obtain an Earth Removal. So we're just asking for an application, but I'm not there.
Correct. If I understand through the Chair, this will allow them, they had going on the building, but their removals mostly need to put their parking areas and everything else, so they can start on the front area where there is really no Earth Removal.
Correct.
So that's what the purpose of this is for.
And it would just help with any kind of construction delays in order.
Right, they get going.
Yeah.
I see no objection.
Seems fine.
No minor change.
Anyone else on the board have any objection? I'll do an official vote, but any other comments or concerns with it, or? All right, seeing as none, so I'll entertain a motion to amend cycling decision, SPR-240305, Condition 16 as follows. The applicant must apply for an Earth Removal Special Permit within one year of the date of this decision prior to commencing construction on this project, if they don't like to make that motion.
So moved?
Motion made by Mr. DeRose, seconded by Ms. Schultzberg. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike DeRose, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Jake Gennatic, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
All right, unanimous. Mr. O'Leary, you are all set with that? Thank you. All right, we have two, I'm going to just do them both. All right, we have two, I'm going to just do them both, I'll do the wording for both. We have two accessory apartment extensions, one for 12 Cook Street and one for 280 South Street. This one, I had no concerns with both of those, they're standard extensions. Do you have any?
No, I have no change in that, because occupants have no changed structures.
Board, any comments, questions, issues? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the accessory apartment extension for 12 Cook Street, as well as the accessory apartment extension for 280 South Street.
So moved?
Seconded.
Made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Gennatic. Any further discussion on either? Seeing as none, roll call vote, please.
Mike Schlesman, aye.
Mike DeRoz, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike S. Hooker, aye.
Jake Gennatic, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Both unanimous. All right. All right, so ongoing development, I'm just going to go to Sleepy Hollow.
Sleepy Hollow. Andy Leonard, on behalf of JMT's...
Do we have anything for it, or just, okay.
So, from, for JMT Sleepy Hollow LLC, but, so I had come in, I believe in the winter when I was here, to talk about the streetlight over the mailbox. So the board asked us to talk to Adam. Murray did talk to him. I don't think there's any issue with what we want to put there. I think through the builder of the homes, one of the, two of the residents asked if we could put a solar light there, and I think it's more because the transformer is in, splits their lot lines, and there'll be a board with a meter on it. So it doesn't really matter to me, but I said I'd be before the board next time, and I'd ask, so it's one of those things, I don't know, there's really not a procedure for lights with the board or the town, so I'm open to anything, I'm happy to put...
Seems, did you find one that's a similar?
Well, we can find something, I just don't know who decides what it looks like, you know? This is, this is just one, there's anything you want.
Yeah.
So we could find something similar. This one in particular, though, to me, is nice looking, this particular pole is 20 feet, we don't want to do that. You know, I'm thinking something 12 feet high, and it's really just to light up the mailbox at night, so kind of in a twilight zone, a little bit, how to move forward. Through the chair, so is there battery, so there's no power, just strictly solar? This would be strictly solar. So you got no sun for three days, now you got no light? Well, so when I, I didn't, I understand that, when I, I think when I read that, I think there was eight days battery storage. So we, and I'm, I'm not trying to push one way or the other, I'm just, I was asked to ask, so I'm here, so.
At the end of the day, it's the residents in that...
Yeah.
Complex that it affects, so, like, they're interested in that, you know, I'm in favor of, you know, whatever we do.
Yeah, and then I'd be happy to bring what, maybe I'll talk with the neighbors through the builder, and pick something that's attractive, and then give it to Matt. As long as the highway department, because the highway department is going to end up maintaining it. So we'll talk to Adam again, we did not talk to Adam about solar.
Yeah.
And we could provide an extra rebuild kit or something like that. Yeah, I mean, that's something between, because five years from now, the town will stock with it, or whatever, so make sure that it's something that he wants to have? Yeah. Like, do you? We'd do that, I just didn't, I'm just trying to...
And I get the whole transformer thing and aesthetic, yeah.
So that, that's why I'm here. No, I understand. All right, I'll, we'll talk with the neighbors, get something and bring it to Matt, and we'll talk to Adam, and I would, as I was going through it, I had the same concern, we could provide an extra kit or something like that.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right. Yep. Luke Wade, Solar at Oak Street.
Chair, excuse my sounding?
SPR-200203 and SR-20023, Electrical Panel Discussion. Greetings, haven't seen you in a little bit. Can you just address yourself, please, for the minutes?
Over at S. Feinsberg, Project Manager, Blue Wave.
All right.
And I'm Greg Morehouse, Project Manager with Mill Creek, as well online.
Okay. How you doing, Greg?
Oh, wonderful.
All right, yeah, just, can you just let us know what you're looking to, what you're requesting?
Yes, we're looking for permission to move ahead with the underground work and pad work, it's right at the top of the access road, and the earth work related to this has already been done, because we excavated that in order to use it as one of our many retention ponds during the winter. So there's very minimal civil work related to it, it would be installing the underground conduits, and then essentially pouring the pad.
And this work is in the next phase, it's, well, it's supposed to be in the next phase?
Yeah, so it's in the area of the next phase.
Okay.
But we have, so we've been approved by the board previously to do the medium voltage poles, the overhead going basically from the side entrance up along the access road, effectively to the pad location, and this would just allow us to connect into that, so it would open up a lot of work with very minimal additional disturbance.
Okay. And I assume this is just to help with future, you know, getting work with National Grid done, and just timeline-wise, it would have helped facilitate...
Yeah, exactly, it helps improve our construction timeline, it facilitates the interconnection work with the utility, and, like I said, very minimally invasive, because a lot of that, the heavy work with it has already been done to help the stormwater remediation during the winter.
Okay. And Mr. Benoit had no issues with this request, and then you will also, just a little note there, you'll need appropriate building permits to move forward, so.
Yeah, all of our building permits are in place already, so I don't see any issues there.
Okay. Board, any issues or comments or questions for this?
No.
So with that, if the board doesn't have any issues with this request, I don't see it being an issue. I'll entertain a motion to authorize Blue Wave to move forward with the main electrical pad work to connect to the overhead work previously authorized by this board.
So moved?
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Schlesman, seconded by Mr. DeRoz. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote, please.
Mike Schlesman, aye.
Mike DeRoz, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Jake Gennatic, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
All right. All right, you're all, so how's the site going?
Good, we are proceeding with the work in the next phase, according to the sequencing plan that we submitted, so we've installed the sort of cutoff trench up gradient of the basins that we're now getting into building, they've started putting in the impermeable core in Basin 4, as well as the access road up to that point, I think. We have some photos, if you want to, Greg might be able to pull it up.
Yeah, I'm curious, is this...
Yeah. Yeah, you can give me permission to share, I'll bring some stuff up.
All right, don't mean to put you on the spot, just haven't seen, haven't seen the guys in a little bit, so.
I prepped him, so he should have some stuff.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I'm sure the weather's really helping things.
Yeah, it's been...
So here's some over sent over today, it's the cutoff trench, this is the Basin 4 area here, and this is obviously the pad where we're going to be, you know, working on the concrete here, already opened up, and let's get here, they had some more photos of the road, the cutoff trench, and I think you've got some, this is what I'm working on, putting in the core for Basin 4.
The general track.
Some decent overheads from relatively recently. Yeah, that's the road leading up to Basin 4, and kind of the outline of Basin 4 here.
So Greg, if you just pause there for a second, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So you can see we're leaving the grass in the center, so the, the sort of circled area there is where the berm for the basin is going to go, the center area is going to be the basin, but we're leaving that undisturbed for as long as we can, just keep it stabilized while we're building up the berm, and then once we're ready to proceed, we'll cut into that as well. But, so, disturbing as little as we possibly can right now to keep it safe.
Maintain.
Yeah, and you had this, yeah, that's really all the latest and greatest there. But yeah, or you can't really tell, but some areas were getting great growth, so this is all new grass, it's hard to see, but we're getting some lights sprouting up in this area, and then obviously we're still plugging along, using leaves as needed, but we will be getting rid of those in the coming months here.
And those are the other temporary basins that we had up on the hill that we were pumping into. But as we fill those in, we can now pump into the cutoff trench, sort of above the basins, and that leads out and drains out into the same corner that the two sediment basins were being drained into.
Okay.
So it's all going to the same place. But obviously, very small quantities at the moment, so that's nice.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Good to see that.
Great, great photos.
Excellent.
All right, thank you, Greg.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Try to get the...
Through the chair.
All right, Mrs. Wicker is back. Any, all right, so Jen, any updates from Cubes? Do you have anything?
The Cubes, they're currently reporting to the Conservation Commission on Monday night, they're going through their restoration plan.
Okay.
Hopefully that'll move forward.
So Business Park at Legacy Circle. So Tom Tedrow had reached out, he's concerned that deer will eat the Arbor Whitey, and asks the board to consider any alternative plans. Mr. Benoit recommended possibly Green Giant, which is deer-proof. So I don't know if the board has any comments, or questions, or issues, or recommendations, maybe Mr. Sokrath?
I think Mr. Benoit's recommendation is probably best, from what we've heard from the consultants about different types of arborvitae, and I know that we need to get something going up there, because I think their business is readily or steadfastly going to be open, and we still don't have the screening that was promised, so I think we got to, they got to do something right away.
Yeah, yeah, Green Giant's fine, or any tree, anything they can do to help, throw some kind of buffer and screening, as they promised they would. Yeah, so recommend that, to talk to them, I got Green Giant works good, or anything they can, anything and everything that they can do to... All right. Looking through this, Jen, do you see any other updates I might be missing?
There's been nothing for our business.
Okay. All right, meeting minutes, if anyone has had an opportunity to look at them.
Not, partially, I would say.
I didn't, I didn't see anything concerning.
The only thing I had was the May 22nd, is that first statement, Mark Allen with Allen Engineering, representing at O'Leary, or regarding at O'Leary?
Yeah, I'm representing at O'Leary, of O'Leary Building.
Ongoing to go on the floor?
Which state?
Removal guide wire, I'm sorry, I don't know which one, you have a minute, 20 seconds, the one that I have.
Where was that, Jay?
Section 4, line item, some McIntyre, sets out current plan, condition of completed removal of guide wire, should be guide wire.
Where was this? It's on the one for the cubes at the bottom.
Second page, yeah.
Yes, 22nd. I thought it was interchangeable, but...
I just saw it in the tray, they have it called a guide wire, so.
Right here.
That's fine.
Okay.
But if it is interchangeable, I'm not subject to leaving it either.
We can change it.
All right. If anyone...
Jake, number nine, Mr. Benoit updated that the access roads, oh, sorry, I thought he said road has, but that's correct, don't mind. It's plural, sorry.
And I did ask Mr. Benoit to follow up on that, too, so I think he's going to try to follow up and make sure that project is, or they went out there and fixed the washouts, so.
Then on number seven, if this is going to be, I'd ask him to give any follow-up on what's going on with the white residential, too. That was a mess. Everybody knew it.
So we have some updates to go.
22nd. Item 7. Just for next reading, just about here.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so, anyone like to make a motion on either or both of these, as amended?
I'll make a motion to accept the Wednesday, May 22nd minutes, as amended.
22nd.
Motion made by Ms. Schlesman, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mike Schlesman, aye.
Mike DeRoz, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike S. Hooker, aye.
Jake Gennatic, aye.
All right.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
All right, that one's all set, and the eighth.
Number one, Tim Callahan, three Lackey Dam Road with the plans, and stating that lots are all conforming. Presented the plans, or? Presented the plan?
Yeah.
Appeared with plans? Or presented?
Yeah, yeah, we'll go, presented, presented the plans and state.
Stated that.
Yeah.
Stated.
Think number two, Mark Allen with Allen Engineering, you can take up that day, just comma, no comma, Mark Allen Engineering, provided revised plans?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so that's why they're waiting until July meeting? Okay.
The only thing I might just change, staff updates, number eight on that one, for AM Solar, it says, Mr. Benoit showed a video of the trenching taking place, I would just change trenching to washout. Because with trenching, it sounds like they have a machine in there, physically trenching With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Wednesday, May 8th, 2024 meeting minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mrs. Wicker, second by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mike Schlesman, aye.
Mike DeRose, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zooker, aye.
I believe that abstained, because I wasn't present.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
All right, and those are all set for you, Jen. And for other business, or, that's unanticipated, but open up to you, Ms. Koetjer.
So, my question to the chair, during emergencies, late at the end of the fiscal year, when I have to dial someone, sometimes I have vouchers come in late, and I need them signed right away. And what our future boards have, past boards have done, is voting the chair or the vice chair to come and sign, instead of waiting for a meeting and collecting all these signatures. So I'd like to make a motion, you better make a motion to allow the chair or vice chair to sign.
I'll make that motion, that the chair be able, chair and/or vice, if the chair is not available, in his absence or unavailability, the vice chair, either or, may sign.
Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue with me, I, unless I'm away, but we, you have a way to get paper to me, so we can get that done. All right. Motion made by Mrs. Wicker, second by Mr. DeRose. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote to allow that.
Do I abstain?
Uh, no, it's.
No.
Yeah, you're good.
Aye.
Mike DeRose, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zooker, aye.
Jake Anatic, aye.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
And aye, because I will be the one doing it, so, okay. Board, anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Let me just go through, make sure I didn't miss anything.
That was it?
Oh, yeah, a lot, there's a lot of signatures.
Yeah, signatures, we've got to do it.
Signatures and decisions, so, that's all I'm seeing, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mrs. Wicker, second by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote, please.
Mike Schlesman, aye.
Mike DeRose, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zooker, aye.
Jake Anatic, aye.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
You're in.